All right. Melissa, would you call us to order?
Yes, sir. The April 26 Town Council meeting is called to order at 6:08 or 6:00 PM. I don't know what time it is. Mayor Marksuka?
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake?
Here.
Councilmember Brett Hanson?
Here.
All right. Amendments to the agenda. I'd like to make a amendment to the agenda in order to nominate a replacement for the PROS chair position. And could I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
And I'll second, because I don't know if you can.
Second if I can.
So I'll second it. So that'll be added to the agenda and put it up right after we get done with nominating. All right. Before we get going, we got important business here. So Robert and Luke, why don't you go in front? And Melissa will swear you in as a member of the Timneth Town Council. And any of the family that would like to now can come through there and take pictures. Why don't we do Luke first and get his, he's got a bigger crew to haul down. Thank you.
Okay, Luke, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name. Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the Town of Timneth, Colorado. Yeah, in Colorado. And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Town Council upon which I am about to enter. Of the Office of Town Council upon which I am about to enter. Welcome to council.
Thanks. Luke, would your parents like to come up here and I'll take a picture?
Do you need?
Do you want all of your family or not? Melissa's a great picture taker. Do you want to take a picture, Robert?
I can do that. You got the phone? I'll take a picture.
Thanks, Melissa. All right, Robert.
Okay, you ready? All right, Ray gives your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name. Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the State of Colorado, and the Charter and ordinances of the Town of Timneth, Colorado, and faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Town Council upon which I am about to enter. Welcome to council.
All right, so Luke and Robert, I know I speak for Lisa and Brett. We're so excited to have you on our council. All right. Next item of business is selection of mayor pro tem. Our mayor pro tem formally just left the room. And so I'd like to nominate Brett as our mayor pro tem. I need a first and second on that. You guys can now vote.
I move to approve Brett as mayor pro tem.
And I will second.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I think everybody said aye but Brett who recused himself. Right, Brett?
How everyone's supposed to vote.
All right. Then I would like to nominate Lisa Lake as new chair for the PROS committee. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 4-0 with Lisa abstaining. Consent agenda? I'm sorry, Melissa.
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have public comments?
Yeah, we have one person.
Oh, I'm sorry. Whoever it is, I apologize.
Bill Gedge?
There you go. My name is Bill Gedge and I live at 3890 Bidens Gate Drive in Harmony Club. And on behalf of a number of Timneth residents, we wanted to provide a proposal to the council for consideration. Wildwing Park is located in the far northeastern side of Wildwing. It's a 22-acre park. Essentially, there are no park facilities. There's a parking lot. And the park is leased to Soccer Association. The Soccer Association practices in the late afternoons during the summer, and they have games on the weekend. But they don't work from November to, say, March. But the proposal that about 20 Timneth residents and I have put together is to designate Wildwing Park as what is considered a fetch-and-go park when the Soccer Association is not working. What that means is all the rules of the park stay in place with the exception of if owners have their dog under control, dogs can be off-leash for purposes of chasing a ball or chasing a frisbee. And we ran it, we've essentially been working under this fashion for about three years. And there's a group of about 15 residents and dogs that get together every morning about 7:15, leave about a quarter to 8:00. And it's been working fine for three years until the new Laramie County Humane Game Warden gave us warnings. And he suggested that Timneth should have a fetch-and-go park much like Berthitt. Berthitt has two fetch-and-go parks where dogs under the control of their owners can be off-leash. And so we have a proposal. I have copies. I'll give you the proposal. But essentially, all it says is that anytime the Soccer Association is not utilizing the field, that residents are able to have a dog off-leash in the park for the sole purposes of chasing a ball or chasing a frisbee. And this is known as a fetch-and-go park. And what we would propose is to do this on a six-month trial basis to see how it works. And then based on that, then make a more formal decision as to whether or not it makes sense. And as we've looked around, part of the issue with Wildwing is that about half the homes are HOA homes, and they're not able to have fenced-in yards, so there's no place for the dogs to run. There's three blocks in Harmony Club that are HOA homes that do not allow fences. So this allows an area for the residents to exercise their dogs for the purpose of fetching a frisbee or ball. So that's essentially it unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Thanks for the well-thought-out comments. I'm going to just add, is my understanding that town staff is working on a plan for Wildwing that will include some dog facilities?
Yeah, we're going through a master planning process, just starting that right now. And as part of that process, we'll be looking at program elements in a dog park maybe associated with that.
Great. Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
All right. Resolution number 16, series 2022, and resolution 17, series 2022, I would like to remove from the consent agenda and discuss it during our regular agenda. The purpose for that is to give us more clarification to both of those resolutions. Do I need a motion for that?
Sorry, yeah. No, you don't. You can just have them pulled.
Okay, so those will be pulled back and I'll bring them in later. Mayor and council reports. Does anybody have a report? Yes.
I just have a quick one to mention that as of right now, I am the Timneth rep on the North Front Range Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO. And with the option of being on the PROS now, I feel like that might be a good opportunity for a different council member to take on that position or that role. The MPO works on a lot of air quality and regional transportation items. We do have a staff member who works on a different piece kind of related to that. So I don't know if that's something that we want to talk about now or if we want to bring a recommendation to the next council meeting of who could be a part of that. The meetings are held on the first Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM, and they move around different locations. So there are some communities within Laramie County as well as some within Weld County who are a part of that group.
So here'd be my suggestion, Lisa, is if, is that you run point on this. And any of the council people that would like to be part of that, get ahold of Lisa. I will not be here for the next meeting, so if you could sort of orchestrate that and go, and if that's okay with everybody.
That sounds great. What I'll do is I can write up a little summary of what it is, and I'll hand that over to Erin to distribute out to council members, and then we can kind of go from there.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance report, Lisa. Do you have anything to add? Okay. Community development report, Matt. Do you have anything significant to add?
No, sir, I don't.
Engineering report, Dawn. Do you have anything more to add? Okay. Chief Jones, do you have anything to add? Okay.
Mark?
Yes.
Could we circle back?
Yes.
5A and 5B. You polled two, but we need to vote on the other two for the consent agenda.
Oh, good point. Thank you. I'm sort of off my game today. All right. Do I, could I have a motion to? Well, first off, does anybody have any discussion on consent agenda? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the meeting minutes and the check register on the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right, thanks, Erin. All right. On removing those, there's no particular order, is there? Okay. So let's just go into resolution number 18, series 2022, a resolution appointing Tom Wood to Planning Commissioner. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Since our esteemed council member, Robert Oxmacher, was elected, he left a vacancy on our planning commission. So in order to fill that vacant seat, we are recommending that Tom Wood, who is an alternate at the moment, be assigned that permanent seat on the planning commission. And as in follow-up, he will assume the term associated with the vacant seat that was Robert's.
Great. Is Tom?
Tom is here.
Tom, do you want to say anything? Great. Any discussion? Could I have a motion?
I would move to approve resolution 18, series 2022, to appoint Tom Wood to the role of planning commissioner.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of number, resolution number 18, series 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just squeak by, Tom. Carried 5-0. That's resolution number 18, series 2022, a resolution appointing Tom Wood to Planning Commissioner. Resolution number 19, series 2022, a resolution appointing Wendy Newland to the Planning Commissioner alternate. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Wendy Newland was actually a part of our last round of applicants. There were two. And it was a tough choice to select between her and Jeremy Holt. So we actually just reached back out to Wendy and asked if she would be willing to continue on since we just did this process. So Wendy agreed, and so we're asking and recommending that she be appointed to the alternate seat on the planning commission.
Great. Wendy, would you like to say anything? Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any questions or discussion? Do I have a motion to approve or appoint Wendy Newland to the Planning Commissioner alternate?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 19, series 2022, a resolution appointing Wendy Newland to Planning Commissioner alternate passed unanimously. Resolution number 2022, a resolution initiating annexation proceedings for property known as Draley? Draley Annexation and giving notice of a public hearing on November 9, 2022. Kevin?
That is a quick typo. Don't know how that one made it through. That would actually be for the
2022.
That would be for the end of June of 2022.
Okay.
We'll get that fixed. I believe it's correct in the staff report for the public hearing date. So this is just the resolution initiating the annexation proceedings. It's what we've done on some previous annexations. This is just acknowledging, council acknowledging and agreeing that this property meets contiguity and state statute requirements per the signed petition. And you are giving the green light for the annexation proceedings to continue to public hearings. This property is located at the northeast corner of River Pass and Three Bell, just south of the existing Trailside and west of the West Village subdivision, kind of in the Timoth Ranch, Timoth South area. Be happy to answer any questions, but yeah, this is just giving the green light to initiate those annexation proceedings.
Any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 20, number 20, series 2022?
I'll move to recommend approval of a resolution initiating annexation proceedings for the property known as the Draley Annexation and giving notice of the public hearing for June 28, 2022.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2022, series 2022, a resolution initiating annexation proceedings for property known as Draley Annexation and giving notice of a public hearing with the amendment of it being June 9, June 28, 2022. Resolution number 16, series 2022, a resolution approving contract with BBC Research and Consulting to conduct Town of Timneth Townwide Fee Study. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. This was on the consent agenda. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I'll give you a brief overview of what the, what it's about. The town conducts a impact fee study on a, kind of routine basis. And I'd say routine probably five, between five and 10 years. So we're in this, the zone for doing this. It generally aligns with when improvements on the capital improvement plan are completed. So that as things roll off, new things come on and you need to reassess those impacts that are being generated. So, but we went through a process, RFP process. We actually only received one, one submission. It was actually the same company that we did. We did this fee study back in twenty fifteen. The fee amount is actually a bit more from the twenty fifteen. It was twenty-six thousand in twenty fifteen and it's forty-three thousand, six hundred now. But the, the, the time duration there is a factor as well as we actually added in review of all the town fees. So it wasn't just impact fees. That previous one was just focused on impact fees. This is, is impact fees plus town, other town fees that are being assessed through other departments or even within the development review process. So we're revisiting all the fees to make sure we're in alignment, we're going to compare with other communities. So that's what's adding to the cost on this item.
Any questions or discussion? Go ahead, Robert.
I do, Matt. I think this is a good idea. It's been seven or so years since, since we've done this. It's a little concerning, of course, that we just had one, one submission and making sure that they were getting our money's worth there. One question I had is, is the scope of work on this just looking at existing impact fees? Or does it include analyzing and making recommendations as if to, as if others may be appropriate? And I'll tell you specifically, the one that I was wondering is in the area of water. I know some, some communities charge a water impact fee.
So we will look certainly at the existing fees that we have. Since most, all of our water is provided by exterior entities, districts, the town doesn't have its own water, doesn't provide its own water to the community. So we may or may not look at that, but it might be part of the conversation at least as, as worth scratching that surface just to see how it.
What are you doing?
Yeah, and my thought there was certainly the town is a water user.
Yep.
And as we're doing things like, you know, improving splash pads and additional recreational fields and stuff, just making sure that we can bring our own water to the table in the same way that we ask developers to, to consider that.
For sure. We, we actually, part of our parks and open space program is that we'd look at acquiring water, raw water, developing wells if we can, working with developers where it's appropriate to buy in or contribute to a system that actually helps the town parks as well as metro district parks. So we look at all those things, but from an impact fee perspective, hadn't talked about it, but it's something we could certainly explore.
And then Robert, just to head in on the one group that submitted, we actually, I actually talked with Commerce City, who did, at the end of twenty-one, actually put out a very similar RFP for all impact fees and user fees. They had said they only received two. One was from a group from San Jose and the other was at Denver. So I think just kind of across the board, there's not many groups doing impact fee studies or have the capacity right now to take on more. Because yeah, even a city as large as Commerce City only had two that submitted RFPs for that. So we're kind of in line with them, seeing that not many people were submitting proposals.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
So kind of continuing with that comment on the number of bids, could you just give me a brief overview of the process that we follow to solicit these bids? Not necessarily the evaluation, I'm just focusing on how are we advertising this? How are we getting it out?
Yeah, we, so we use BidNet, which is a national bid platform that distribute, we select all the categories that make the most sense. And we actually broaden those selections to things that might not even be peripheral kind of the things. In that way, anybody that follows BidNet and most vendors do follow BidNet because it's kind of the universal way of doing it. They see those, even if it pops up as a finance thing, it pops up as a, any other kind of development types of things. It, they'll, they'll flag it. We had actually twenty people download and view the documents and a couple actually made inquiries about it. And it just came down to BBC was the only one that actually submitted. I will say that BBC is kind of the, on the forefront of, they kind of do this, this is their bread and butter kind of thing. They actually wrote kind of the book on impact fees. They, they were the ones that spearheaded the change to the legislature back in the, in the eighties. And so they're like the premier in terms of impact fee assessment, so.
I would imagine the scope of work is pretty niche as well. It's
It is. And it is a unique thing to the kind of western, you know, air regions. There's other parts, and Aaron was relating this to me, is that in the Midwest and other states, they don't even, impact fees are illegal in some of those places. So in this case, this is a loud thing. It's a, through the state of Colorado in particular. And so this group is one of the groups that is very dialed into it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate even despite it being a fairly niche thing and this being a very established company, that we are going through this RFP process because it keeps everybody honest and keeps everybody competitive and so.
And we did, we, we actually called some folks too that we think thought would be candidates and they, they were mildly interested and they passed.
We are a relatively small town, so I imagine that comes into play. So, all right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Could I have a motion?
Sorry, I lost the wording on it there. So moved. Could you, could you read it?
Sure.
Sorry, Mark.
Resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving contract with BBC Research and Consulting to conduct the town Timneth townwide fee study. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving a contract with BBC Research and Consulting to conduct a town of Timneth townwide fee study passed unanimously. Resolution number seventeen, series twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving contractor agreement with CU Onsite Solutions for roadway patching, crack sealing, concrete repairs and seal coating for twenty twenty-two. Don?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Much like Matt, I think I'll, you've got the, our authorization request here, but I'll give you a little brief overview of where we're at. Our budget this year was three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Our budget last year was three hundred and seventy-five thousand. We did request RFPs. Like Matt, we only got one proposal that was submitted, but that's, that's not unusual for this because it is very much a niche group. The majority, if not all of the asphalt providers, North Carolina, North, Northern Colorado, do not do these services. They, they put down asphalt. Last year, we contracted these services with Apex. The contract we had starting last year was two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And then we ultimately spent the entire three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. As the year progresses, the needs kind of unfold themselves and we, we, we react to that. This year, we had, we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars to start. We would like to have a authorization for the whole three hundred and seventy-five and basically do the same thing. The contractor who proposed this year is an offshoot of Apex, who was the contractor last year. It's the next generation. The, the people who were part of Apex are now the people in CU Solutions. So that's kind of an overview, but happy to answer any questions about this. Brett?
Don, my understanding is with the seal coating and a subdivision, we kind of rotate around. So which subdivision is up this year? Do you recall?
I do not, actually.
Okay.
But, but, but you're exactly right. Every year, we, in fact, we look at different quarters of the town, of the town and we, basically every three years hit everything.
Okay.
Don, why don't you send an email around? That's a good question. And just send an email on that. That'd be great.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds like since the same players are involved, were we pleased with their work and responsiveness last year?
We were. And, and they're very, let's just say, client, this is a, this is not a very clean process. And, and we've, we've evolved with them into a, a very, I mean, for us, a very acceptable situation. And we really, we really believe this is a program that, that elongates the, the, what you say, the, the life of our street systems and everything. And I think most of you have experienced, that are on the council now, have experienced at least a, a season when we did this in your areas. I, I don't want to say we have a hundred percent satisfaction from every, let's say, property owner, but it's, it's pretty close to that.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, could I have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number seventeen, series twenty twenty-two, approving the contractor agreement with CU Onsite Solutions for the roadway patching, crack sealing, seal coating and concrete repairs for twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolutions number seventeen, series twenty twenty-two, resolution approving contractor agreement with CU Onsite Solutions for roadway patching, crack sealing, concrete repairs and seal coating for twenty twenty-two passed unanimously. Is there any, we are going to go to discussion, but any further items to bring up? Okay, so let's go to discussion. Matt, on the growth management area.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as stated in the staff report, this is a discussion only, so there's no action being requested. But kind of want to get, get this in front of you and then get a little bit of guidance. And Kevin and I are going to kind of tag team this, so I'll kick it off though. We're, the town was approached by the city, or Laramo County, actually, there was an application, was it City of Fort Collins? City of Fort Collins, there's an application that came in, in an area of the town of Timneth's growth management area. And that application is, it's an interesting situation where the same property owner owns property within the town or within the City of Fort Collins, as well as within the Timneth growth management area. So, but their application would be bridging both of those spaces. It's best to show it on a map here, Kevin. Why don't you bring that up and we can kind of get you closer in the, I'll just tee it up. The ask is going to be from the council or at least some discussion about should we allow for our GMA boundary to be modified in this area? So after the discussion, we can
Hey Kevin, put up this one, because I think it's that one. Yeah. All right, so could you, could you give me the road?
Yeah, so Vine Drive is what kind of splits the middle. That's County Road fifty-six, I think, is on our, is on our side, but that's essentially Vine Drive through the middle. County Road five is the, kind of on the eastern side, next to where the commercial mixed use is. So I'll actually go to this, this next map to kind of give you a little bit better visual of what Matt was talking about. So the, the blue, the blue, not the blue, the green highlighted area is the properties that this particular property owner has. Last name of Krieger. So you can see that one of those properties is actually just to the west, outside of our GMA red line. And then the other two are in our GMA, kind of in the, the gray highlight area. So we've got this kind of unique situation where we have, yeah, one property owner in kind of three jurisdictions, kind of
Hey Kevin, hold just a sec. Let everybody get, we're, we're having some map problems here, so let everyone get caught up with where you are. So she got it. Did you, are you okay yet, Brett?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Are you able to point on this?
So yeah, so there's technically three properties. One that kind of loops down here, this kind of littler one where this house is. And then this very odd shaped one that kind of does this flag pulling down and around. So yeah, this property owner is kind of sitting in three, three jurisdictions, county, Timneth GMA and then City of Fort Collins. And just to give a little bit background, when this area was part of a previous IGA we had with the City of Fort Collins, the reason, part of the reason why this was done in a certain way was because this parcel here, this kind of flag Polish looking one was in different ownership. And since then, they've bought the other two properties in this area. So that's kind of why we've got a little bit of a funky area here. So Matt and I, we've had conversations with Fort Collins and Laramo County at the same time about this general area. So that's when I'll go back to this one, just so you can kind of see what the land uses are for this area. And what Matt and I are kind of looking for on guidance from you all tonight is, A, do you want us to pursue conversations with Fort Collins of seeing about this property owner de-annexing from Fort Collins to then come to Timneth, since it's in our GMA if, or if we want to remove a portion of our GMA and give it back to Fort Collins, who's at this point in time would be willing to entertain those discussions. And the portion that we would kind of trade back with them is what's highlighted in red for the most part. The reason why we did that is because you can, if you can see, we've got the boxholder ditch that kind of splits down this way. So that's a good point to kind of give separation there just because we don't have property, you know, kind of bordering both, but that is
Hey Kevin, could you or Matt, yeah, I'm, I'm lost. Could you, I can't see what's Fort Collins and what's Timneth GMA and stuff. Could you get up to the screen and just point it out?
Yeah, so
If it shows up on this map, but I don't see it.
So
He's going to draw it on this.
So basically, basically what I'm kind of hatching out here is in the City of Fort Collins.
I can't see that, Kevin. Oh, can you see it?
Can you guys see that? Okay.
Yeah.
So that all is currently in the City of Fort Collins right now. And that also then, yeah, includes kind of up into, up into here.
Everything basically to the west of the red line.
Left of what?
The red line. That red squiggly line that goes zigzagging around, everything on the west side of that, to the left, is City of Fort Collins.
It doesn't have the gray hatch to it.
So, so wait a minute. So I heard something and I see something else. So City of Fort Collins.
So everything, everything that is west of this is already in the City of Fort Collins. So this is left of that squiggly lines with that
That is not in Fort Collins, so that's where it's this little flag pole that gets up into there. So that is currently in our GMA, but that's kind of almost enclave around just because of this flag pole. So this sits in Fort Collins just because of how that property got real.
So Kevin's going to go to the land use map and everything in the GMA inside the red bordering line that he's going to show here is all very low density residential is the land use designation. So are you, can you go to that page? So if you see that light tan color, that's all very low residential designation, which is one, one dwelling unit to the acre. So as far as in our, from staff's opinion, is that this is not as highly desirable as, say, those two red parcels. as, say, those two red parcels, which are commercial mixed use, land use designations, which have the potential for more of a commercial or other higher density type of use. So the removal potential, and this is just a balance act here, is if we want to, if we were to remove that area, we'd be only removing those very low density residential parcels from the-
The green is designated open space, correct?
The green, that little green figure is-
So we'd also be getting up some, is that, is that river? Like, what, it looks like river to me, what is that?
That was part of Flood Plain that was coming through off of the old Box Elder.
Is it usable open space in any way, or is it just undeveloped land, so we've called it open space?
So I'll go back to this one, Brett. As you can kind of see, this actually calls out the old Box Elder Creek, just north of where it says Vine Drive, which is what that open space was following. You can also see that there are existing single family residences where that kind of splits. So it's not necessarily losing usable open space at this point. If those were to redevelop it, it would probably be more of a passive open space just because of what it is. But since there's single family residences there, it's, it's not as if we're losing existing open space.
The area south of the green hatch, you can see where there's, looks like kind of an oxbow, a very squiggly green faded back lines, that's the old, the ditch alignment, or not the ditch alignment, but the Box Elder Creek alignment. That's most likely not going to be developed in any measurable way. There may be some single family large estate lots around that. But there could be potential for an open space corridor through there, whether it's in Fort Collins or in the town of Timneth. I mean, that's, that's really the call here, is what we're, the other option is we could literally, if you were inclined, you could follow the green outline and just move the GMA boundary to that green hatched area that Kevin has to remove those. Or we ask Fort Collins to deannex and they annex to the Timneth, that other piece that's on the west side. So those are really the three options that we're bringing forward for discussion.
So here's my two bits is, I don't know, I don't, I don't like this suggestion there of we moving back and giving up the best piece, which is in the front. And that vine just got improved and it's a very nice intersection. It'll be, it's not, we're not going to, it's not going to get developed for 10 years, but in 10 years, that's going to be developed. And if you slide your map to the southeast, you'll see hundreds of homes that are right there on that edge, which eventually somebody's going to build a C store, some other things that are right there, which will bring in revenues to the town, where trading for stuff that's out, what is that, two miles?
Currently?
Yeah, right there, the red.
Yeah, that's roughly two miles.
That's what I thought. So we'll be two miles away, which basically takes it out of the commercial area. I mean, nobody's going to build something of commercial use in that, whereas they will. And we can easily, I mean, just because they're zone rural now, we can easily go in and rezone those to commercial. Those people probably would be excited to have it rezoned commercial if they're not living there anymore. And, and by the time it's ready to be zoned, zoned commercial, which will be, let's say, five to 15 years from now, there'll be so much noise from that traffic, they aren't going to want to live there. So I'd hate to see us give up a real valuable piece of potential property, commercial property, to Fort Collins unless we're forced to.
That's perfect. Yeah, that's actually the conversation we had with Fort Collins.
I think I concur with the mayor on that. I, I don't see a lot of benefit to us to give up more of the land. And if anything, I look at the map and it makes more sense for it to go the other way around, for them to deannex from Fort Collins and come be part of Timneth. So I think that would be throughout, I would prefer.
Robert, I actually just dug a couple of questions. One is the land that is currently a part of that flag pole, is that in the Fort Collins GMA? Or has that actually been annexed to Fort Collins?
It has been annexed to the City of Fort Collins. And just, and another note with that property, that does come with a little bit of an interesting pivot, is the southern portion of that property, I'll go back to, I'll go back to that other map real quick. So the southern, the southern portion that I'm kind of highlighting here with my hand, that borders down there, that was actually, a big portion of that was part of the IGA that we had with them back in 2014, because that, that portion down there actually then set up the enclave for the City of Fort Collins to do their Mulberry annexation, to enclave all of Mulberry into Fort Collins. So there would be, there would have to be some split. Part of that part of property would have to stay in Fort Collins, just so they can keep that enclave. If that's the direction you would want to go at that point. But yeah, that property is currently in, just because of, they needed that for their enclave.
And that was one of my questions, is what was their motivation for so aggressively annexing this?
Yeah, so that, that was part of it, because then, off of about the midpoint here, kind of where I have my hand, that's where they've annexed a sliver down through the-
Overly, yeah.
Development that then created that enclave. So that was their motivation at the time, and that is something that would need to be in consideration, because they are requesting that that still stay intact.
Steph, correct me if I'm wrong, and Robert, I'm going to go with, if you sit there and look, I mean, this is a very thought out part on Fort Collins, and so if they're willing to give us some property, that's great. But if you look, Prospect, they own all the corner around that intersection and back. And that's going, what are the plans of that? There's like three or four significant revenue producing businesses that are going to go in there. That's Prospect, Mulberry, there's McDonald's and all that through there, and this sliver that they're talking about. Vine is really the next spot that's going to go up the highway and, and be a commercial site. And that's why I'd hate to see us, we've already given up Prospect and Mulberry. I'd hate to see us give up Vine also.
So just, so you're also aware, the proposal that was brought before Fort Collins and Laramo County for the entirety of the green area was a solar farm. So that is what that property owner, they've been talking with Excel, and that's what they've been trying to move forward on, is a solar farm for pretty much the entirety of the green hatched area. So not quite sure if that plays into any of your decision, especially about the commercial, because that would take a lot of that frontage out with a, with a solar farm. If, if we agreed with Fort Collins to remove it from them and add it to us, that would, that's what that property owner would be coming forward with on the proposal.
I think, I think the valuable piece is the stuff that's right along the highway and right off of Vine, just like on Prospect, Fort Coll, I mean, it's almost identical to the Prospect intersection, almost identical. And so to me, being clear out there, that's probably 30 years of development from there. And by then, who knows what will happen, whereas-
Sorry, I, just so I'm clear, you're talking about kind of where the triangle piece and then this-
I'm talking about where the I-25 sign is.
Yeah.
And then you've got, almost, you got a triangle there, and then you got City of Fort Collins right below it.
Yeah.
That's the section I'm talking about, that I think has more commercial viability than anything on that map.
Well, that would still be within Fort Collins, that wouldn't be part of a swap.
I thought they are willing to trade us off. Okay, just, thank you. That's why I kept trying to ask who owned what, where.
Yeah, just the green. So the, what's in Fort Collins would still stay in Fort Collins. They are just willing to take on the rest of kind of what we had highlighted out there in red as part of their growth management area for annexation in this. Because that's why with the green being there, if it stayed within Fort Collins, or if it stayed in Timneth, or went into Timneth, that's why the proposal is a solar farm.
Shoot, I thought I was going to get a good land deal here.
No, just, just, so just the green hatch would be on the west side of that red line, would be what they'd be willing to disconnect.
Correct. But that also means Fort Collins may not be super attached to this property if the plan is for it to be a solar farm.
Solar, from what we've gotten from them so far, they are not attached to it, but they're not opposed to it. The, basically, they just, this property owner needs to kind of know what jurisdiction they're going to end up going into. Because yeah, like I said, they've got currently in county, currently in Fort Collins, but then also in our GMA.
Okay, because I mean, a plan's not done until it's done. We talked solar farms two years ago, it didn't pan out.
Yeah, Fort, Fort Collins is willing to have the project within their jurisdiction. They're also willing to deannex a portion of it to go to the county, so then county can handle it. But keeping the enclave that they need, they're just trying to get some clarity on how to go forward with it.
But that is just, sorry, Mark, that is the staff's position, they would have to go to their city council as well. So we're not, it's not a given that they'd be willing to disconnect either. So we want, what we want is to know your position, which is kind of where we were starting from with them. When we met with them, we were like, look, we don't think we're going to, they're going to want to give any of this ground up, our council.
Let me, let me ask a question. So the green, sorry, I'm still trying to grapple with who owns who, what, when, where, is in the green, which you're saying will be maybe a potential solar farm, who owns that right now?
The, it's owned under the last name of Krieger.
No, I mean, what jurisdiction is it under?
So the, the flag pole portion, that flag pole portion is under the jurisdiction of Fort Collins.
Okay.
It's in Fort Collins, currently annexed in. These other two properties that kind of border it are currently in the county, but in our GMA. So jurisdiction would fall under the county.
So if they put a solar farm there, I would think the use tax would be fairly significant in putting that in.
We haven't gotten that far into the discussions with them.
My point is, it's not, it's not throwaway land.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
I mean, it's just not throwaway land. I mean, if they're going to put a solar farm in there, my guess is the use taxes will be significant.
Yep, one-time use tax will be pretty significant on that, for sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa.
So, so right now, the part that is in our GMA, but is currently in the county, if this property owner is moving forward, is there a way for them to move forward without us doing anything, seeing as none of it is currently in our jurisdiction?
The only way they could move forward was if the proposal was entirely on the property that's in the county. And then that way, at that point, they would, the county would refer to us on if we would want to annex because of our IGA with the county. And then you all at that point would either have to deny an annexation petition to then allow them to develop under the county, or we would have to annex the property to then have them develop in Timneth. That's the way our IG works with the county. Which we, we can, it's within three months.
So right now, if they, if they were wanting to move forward right now, they would, they would be required to work with City of Fort Collins, as well as the county, who would then be required to work with us, is that correct?
Correct.
So they're trying to kind of clean this up so that they can more easily work with just one, one person? Or one entity, I guess?
Yep, that is it.
Go ahead, Robert. One question and then some comments. Does this owner, the Krieger, have other property in the area that might fold into this, or is it just this?
It's just these three, these three properties that they have. There's two other owners to the south, and then one owner kind of owns this block, the southeast cor, or southwest corner of County Road 5 and Vine. So there's three other property owners that are kind of in that area, but Krieger's the only one that has those. There's not any other, that would be up for discussion.
My initial thought is I appreciate the property owner's desire just to work with one jurisdiction, and I'm sympathetic to that, and I, I'm okay with us trying to help them out there. I understand Fort Collins' desire not to lose their Mulberry annexation, and that they couldn't just give everything to us if they wanted to. So I'm wondering if there is a way to move forward where the city gets what they need to maintain that, and then we try to welcome the property owner into our GMA and, and work on assuming the bulk of the land here, I think is what, you know, kind of serves all the needs, unless I'm, I'm missing something.
I agree with Robert.
Yeah, we can go down that direction with them, if that's what the consensus is from council of splitting off to keep Mulberry for Fort Collins, and then, you know, potentially having the rest come to Timneth. As Don had mentioned, it would require a two-mile flag pole annexation, if that's something that we would want to entertain, or that would basically then, as Lisa was talking about, it would then potentially ultimately put it into the county if we don't want to annex the, the property.
So let me summarize what I heard you say, Robert, make sure that, and then everyone correct if you don't like what's going. So I'm going to just say what I think we are, is that we want to, we want to be good neighbors. We want to work with Fort Collins to the extent that it makes sense, that we want to work with the property owner to the sense, the point it makes sense. That said, that we want to keep our revenue source and try to maximize it to the extent we can.
I think that accurately sums it up. And I guess we're all assuming that, you know, this land has revenue potential. We're assuming that solar farm is, brings in money, or that it is developable commercially. I think if any of that turns out not to be true, it, it perhaps changes the analysis if this land truly is only capable of low density residential. I think that changes the, how we look at it. But yeah, right, right now, I'm, I'm with the mayor, that this appears to be valuable real estate for the future financial stability of the town.
Okay, so just so Matt and I are 100% clear on this, you, you guys are good with us having the negotiation, or not, discussions with them, Fort Collins, to see about having them cut off part of the property to keep their Mulberry annexation, but then to have the rest of it deannex from them to annex, you know, or be put into our GMA for future growth?
Right. And I don't, I don't think we like the idea of trading for the property to the east.
Perfect.
And that's exactly what we need to know.
Perfect.
Okay, everybody good?
Thank you.
Mark, could I jump in for one last?
Absolutely.
Kevin, could you point out the two miles that we would, because we will flag pole annex, I'd like to see the two miles.
Yes.
So Vine might be in good condition, but I'd be curious the condition of that relative. So we might have a potential revenue source, but you're also taking on maintenance of two miles of road with no-
Correct.
With no jurisdiction for us.
So-
If you could talk to that.
Yeah, so the, the easiest way for this is this maroon line that is our GMA border, that's County Road 5. So right here, where I've got my hand going across, that's the north side of Saratoga Falls, to which is where we currently annexed County Road 5, too. It doesn't like me doing that. So with that, you would follow this, the GMA line up, so it would be up County Road 5 to Mulberry, where County Road 5 then jogs east, and then County Road 5 then would continue north on this kind of slight diagonal, and then up to Vine, and then over. So that would be essentially the annexation, but that's where we would have to, you know, analyze that and review that if there was the request from the property owner to us at the time, to evaluate from when they would be referred to us from the county. So we would have to analyze that at that time, and then that's to where I was mentioning, you know, with Lisa's question, we would either have to deny a annexation application for them to then develop in the county, or we would have to take on that annexation, that responsibility, and then that property.
Can any, I don't drive that far north on County Road 5 very often. Can anyone speak to the condition of that?
It's an unimproved gravel road. From, from Mulberry north all the way to Vine Drive is unimproved. So it's a, just a gravel road.
And so, not to disagree with what's been said, I think there is revenue generation potential, but there will be costs also associated with that. So one other option would be to have staff look at those to sort of balance and provide some numbers relative to potential revenue generation versus the, the actual costs will incur from that annexation. relative to potential revenue generation versus the, the actual cost will incur from that annexation.
Yeah, you're, you're right on, Aaron. And, and the other, the other component of that is, well, that's a cost that, that we'll evaluate, and we have for other annexations, for sure. But there's also, once you do something like that, everything that's contiguous to that annexation is now potentially annexable. So property that was not annexable before is now. So I think in addition to evaluating the costs, I think we'll look at the opportunities, because there will be noticeable opportunities that don't exist today.
Okay. Thank you, we have good direction, we will defend the position of our GMA boundary, as well as ask for additional ground if so, so inclined, so.
Put up a fort over there, we'll guard it.
Might as well ask for Mulberry while you're at it.
Keep going.
I did just read that they are not wanting to extend their, their city limits right now through the Mulberry corridor.
Really?
Because of the costs associated that we, that we've talked about.
Interesting. Okay, no, absolutely, one thing I've learned in life. Any, any further questions, discussion, you guys, you guys good? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.